This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Bob?
I don't think he's on yet, Colleen.
No, I don't think so either.
Bob, is that you?
Yes, I'm here, yes.
Okay, we'll get started. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Ms. Checo, if you could do your roll call.
Councilmember Totino.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you, Steph. Ms. Flanagan, could you do prayer for council, please?
Yes. O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. Magna thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. For which it stands. Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Hear you now.
Okay, pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Colleen. President Leonard seems to be having some microphone difficulties. So I just, I wanted to thank everyone for joining us for our regularly scheduled public voting session at this time. Please mute your audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comment section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conshohockenpa.gov. A member of Borough Administration will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. And thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. Prior to the voting session, council did hold an executive session on legal and property matters. The consent agenda is the first item on the agenda to approve and adopt the March 3rd and March 17th regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, and Barton?
Second it, Griffin.
The second item is to approve. Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to approve the March ending treasures, report, and accounts payable in the amount of $2,386,200. I'm sorry, $2,386,235.57.
I'll make that motion, Griffin.
I'll second it, Totino.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Steph. Under, thanks, Tina. Under new business, we had a request from St. Mark's Lutheran Church. So during COVID, they closed Fifth Avenue between the alley and Harriet Street. And they actually held church services outside. They were looking to do the same thing. They're looking for Sunday, May 9th, Sunday, May 23rd, Sunday, June 6th, and Sunday, June 20th. This has been vetted through Borough Administration. We do not have any issues with them moving forward. They are in the process of completing the special event paperwork along with providing insurance certificates. So I know that those items are coming. So if you are inclined, in front of you this evening is a motion to approve the special event requests for St. Mark's Lutheran Church contingent upon final administrative review. I'll make that motion, Sokolowski.
I'll second it, Flanagan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Colleen, did you join us? The next. Okay, go ahead, Steph. All right. The next item is from the Friends of Conshohocken Parks. They are asking to, for council to consider and approve the Friends of Conshohocken Parks to sponsor signs for the Story Walk event, which is being cosponsored between the Department of Recreation, Friends of Conshohocken Parks, and the library. I don't know, Tina, do you want to add anything to that? Yeah, so Friends of Conshohocken Parks is really trying to get up and running again post-COVID. And what we really are looking towards doing right now is more of awareness campaign to get our name out there and our logo out there. So one of the ways that we're looking to do that is to partner with different folks to be able to use our logo as, and be seen throughout the Borough of Conshohocken. So one of the events that we are looking at is the storybook walk. And the idea is that we would have a trail throughout the park where we would have these picture frames and then the stories inside the picture frame. And the parents could walk through and read the different parts of the story. I don't know if you've gone to Disney and seen, you know, how they did in the Dr. Seuss land where you'd have the different parts of the books throughout the, the kind of walkway or pathway. And to do that, we're able to cosponsor these picture frames where we can get Friends of Conshohocken Park logo out there and begin to get brand awareness so that folks know that we're the fundraising arms. So what we're looking for is the idea to spend no more than $400 on these 10 frames. And then we, as Steph said, we would split the cost of the full project with Parks and Recs. So with that, I would say that, could I have a motion to approve the request for Friends of Conshohocken Park to purchase 10 signs at the cost not to exceed $400?
I'll make that motion, Barton.
Or I'll second, Anita.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to talk over you.
It sounds like, it sounds like we have a motion from Barton and a second from Flanagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, thank you very much. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business. The first item is the addendum to the park permit application for the Conshohocken Golden Bears. At the work session, we discussed the adding an addendum to the, to the usual park permit application, which listed out conditions. The conditions, reservations made on a first come, first served basis. The bears will pay the cost of lawn services for the eight field game preparation, along with a $2,500 escrow that will be held with the Borough and returned to the organization if there's no need to utilize that escrow. There's no parking on 13th Street, no double parking, no blocking residents' driveways, no smoking, no drugs, no alcohol, no posting of sign on property. Not be used unless approved by the Director of Recreation and is on the official calendar. That includes the snack stand. No trespassing on public property, which includes surrounding residence properties, no loud profane thumping music, no foul language or profanity, no fighting. Code of conduct on file with the Borough. Condition agreement signed and on file. Use of portable restroom facilities is required. Public urination is prohibited. They're also responsible for the cost of an additional restroom that will, again, be invoiced on a monthly basis. We have to have on file any individual to have access to the snack stand, trash collected and disposed of. Inference to all park rules. Health and safety plan that includes CDC recommendations and all state directives and the termination clause, which is one violation of any of the conditions listed above, will result in immediate termination of the use agreement with Borough of Conshohocken. That was further vetted and discussed with our police chief. The termination clause specifically now indicates that any documentation or termination of the agreement that's been violated will be at the, will be with the discretion of the Borough Manager's Office in consultation with the Borough's Chief of Police. We will work directly with White Marsh's Police Department as well, should there be coordination required. I think that the only other stipulation that we heard from the residents during the work session that was added to the park permit application was the responsibility, the Bears Organization responsibility for any visiting teams. So our expectation is that anyone who is visiting to compete against the Bears will also treat our facilities as we would expect them to be treated. So there is, I will say that there was some social media attention that was given to this topic in particular, basically insinuating that the Borough wasn't somehow trying to solicit funds from the Bears and/or the conditions were not fair. We did receive in writing a letter from the Bears Board, the Board President, the Vice President, the Treasurer, the Secretary, the Cheer Director, the Athletic Director, the Snack Stand Coordinator, and four members at large, basically going on record saying that by no means does the Board support anything that was said via social media outlets following the work session. And that they indicated to the Borough that their intention has been and will remain to being positive role models to the children of Conshohocken Golden Bears and to have a successful season. So in addition to the addendum, we have that indication on file with the Board. So if you are inclined, the motion this evening would be to approve an addendum to the park permit application for the Conshohocken Golden Bears.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is to consider approving AmerisourceBergen RACP grant-related agreements. Mike, do you want to just briefly touch on that item?
Sure, Steph, I will. So council is very familiar at this point with the RACP program. You approved the exact same agreements but for a different grant last year. This grant in particular is for $2 million for purposes of coming towards the parking garage associated with the Sora and AmerisourceBergen project. There's a cooperation agreement, a sub-grantee agreement, and a reimbursement agreement, all of which I have reviewed with you again the last time around and also at your last meeting. So with that, given your familiarity, it would be appropriate at this time to consider approving those agreements and it would be subject to step in my final review and approval. Sometimes these things get modified slightly between your approval and execution, but obviously any substantive can come back to you. So with that, Steph, that's all.
So I would just, if there is inclination, the motion is to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the AmerisourceBergen RACP grant-related agreement, subject to final review and approval of the Borough solicitor.
Do you have a motion?
Flanagan.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Barton.
I will be recusing myself. Colleen.
Thank you. I got it, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
So we have, you're welcome, a motion, a second, and one recusal by Mr. Stokely. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do I hear an opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, President Leonard. Item C is to consider authorizing advertisement of an amendment to the parking and snow route section of the Borough Ordinance as discussed during the work session. That would include the addition of a stop sign at the intersection of Jones and Elm. It would include a no parking sign on East 8th Avenue to the intersection with Harriet Street, and a no parking sign on West 5th Avenue from the western edge of the driveway to the parking lot for the Borough Police Department, to the edge of the parking lot for the Borough Administrative Offices, a patient-only parking sign on East 11th Avenue in the area in front of 20 East 11th Avenue. And in addition, two additions to the snow route, which is East 1st Avenue, the north side between Harriet and Fayette, and West 1st Avenue, the north side between Fayette and Barst. This evening is consideration to authorize advertisement of those amendments.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Griffin.
I'll second it, Stokely.
All in favor?
Aye.
All.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item D, during your work session, Brian Keveney, our traffic engineer, presented the concept of a Fayette Street traffic calming and road diet. For this evening, the next step in this would actually be carrying out a proposed scope of work to further evaluate the feasibility of implementing a revised lane configuration known as this road diet concept. I believe that administration is in support of this study. We always like to make decisions based off of actual data in hand, and we believe that this study would be doing that in particular, regardless of the outcome. But specifically, that would be contingent, of course, upon PennDOT's approval of the concept and study. So Brian Keveney, call if there's any specific follow-up questions to the presentation from last Wednesday and based off of the feasibility study that was provided in your meeting packets. I do have a question. It's Tina. From, I'm sorry, Bob. I talked over you.
I just wanted a question on how much was the study?
So this study would be $19,800. And then there would be a portion of the, of the study that would be based off of time spent using the current Borough rate schedule, which is about $145 an hour. So you're looking at around the $20,000, $25,000 range. So my question is, the scope of the project, does it only include looking at the activity along Fayette Street? Does it take into consideration what will happen to the avenues when cars decide not to sit on Fayette Street because they're not going fast enough and use some of the residential streets? So does it take that into consideration? Is one question. And then, I lost my second question, so I'm gonna have to think about that for a second. Brian, are you able to touch on that?
Yeah, so, so to address the first question, that will be a key component of the study. So the point of the study is to determine if Fayette Street, being reduced to one lane in each direction, will still present an acceptable traffic situation. So it, the issue that we're, that we're fundamentally studying is, can we still provide a reasonable traffic flow rate and reasonable expectation of, you know, a limited delay traveling on Fayette Street? So when we, when we look at the existing condition versus that potential reduced condition, you know, we're gonna assess that difference. And the study would note if we would expect any traffic to divert from Fayette Street onto some of the adjacent roadways. And that'd be, that's part of the, the analysis that PennDOT requires.
Brian, can I just, sorry, Tina, just to jump right off that.
Sure.
So one of the things you mentioned two weeks ago was a key component would be the CMAC system, where all the line, the traffic lights would be coordinated and better aligned. Is that in place now? Are they, are they coordinated?
Yeah, so, so the signal modernization is almost 100% complete. The adaptive signal system in the, in the southern end of Fayette Street is still collecting data, but should be activated within the next few weeks here. But the signals at 6th and 9th and 11th have all been modernized. So they're all capable of running several time-of-day programs that would be able to carry more traffic on Fayette Street. So that modernized signal system is a key component of maintaining that efficient traffic flow.
Yeah. Thank you, Annivee. That was my thoughts.
And then, Brian, I remembered what my other question was.
Sure.
Does it, does it make sense to actually study it now when we are not seeing normal traffic patterns based on the fact that we're still coming out of COVID and there's still a lot of work from home? Does it make more sense to wait a little bit longer until, you know, what we expect or anticipate to see comes back to the more normal would be?
No, that, I mean, that's a fantastic question. We, we addressed that in the proposal because what, you know, knowing full well that we're still within, you know, what I would, what I would call COVID-19 traffic conditions, where we're not, you know, at, at what pre-COVID volumes were. And we don't really know when they may or may not return in full. You know, we had proposed to do some new data collection at intersections where we don't have any historic data and supplement that with some of the pre-COVID data that we already have at a number of the intersections. So the intent of the study is to take a, not just a snapshot of what's operating today. The intent would be to look at what the, you know, the reasonable expectation of traffic on Fayette Street would be once the pandemic conditions, you know, come to an end or, you know, near an end. So we are, we are looking at a conservatively high analysis from that standpoint. You know, we'd be looking at, at higher traffic volumes than what's there probably today to make sure that the, that the, the one, the road diet configuration is fairly assessed.
And you said you would be adding several of the other evaluations that you, you have done based on the projects. So you would be putting all of that information that we've done over the last several years into this?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, we will be looking at some of the, the peak hour counts that have been done historically over the past five to seven years and using that data and adjusting it upwards to reflect what, effectively what we want to look at is what 2021 traffic would have been like without COVID's impact. And that's what would be the basis of the analysis for Fayette Street.
Okay, so is the analysis specifically for the road diet diagram that you showed us on paper, or that will lead us to what potential road dieting we could do at different areas in the Borough?
Well, it's, it is for that concept. So the, the alternatives that we would look at are how the road functions today with two lanes in each direction that allow all turning movements from the, from the, from those through lanes versus the three-lane configuration, which would be one lane in each direction with dedicated left turn lanes at the intersections. So we would have a very clear, clearly defined set of operational, you know, ratings of the existing conditions versus the proposed condition. Now, it doesn't mean that you would have to implement it for the entire stretch. We could pick different sections of Fayette Street that may make more sense than others. But this, this study would answer those questions as to how well each intersection would operate under that new configuration.
And then, no matter what, this, this would need to be approved by PennDOT because this is a PennDOT highway, correct?
It is a PennDOT roadway. And really, what this study would be used for is, is if the Borough does decide to, if it, if it does show that the road diet is a feasible solution and the Borough would like to proceed with it, this document could be the basis for seeking funding for the construction, which would be available through either PennDOT or DVRPC. And, and yes, you're correct, that PennDOT would ultimately have to approve any, any change in the concept on Fayette Street as it is a state highway.
And Brian, we can do the study contingent on PennDOT's approval, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Brian, my question is, how many cars travel Fayette Street at, right, I guess, 2020 before the COVID hit us? What was the average? Would you know that? We get that information?
Yeah. I don't know if I have those numbers right in front of me. Last I recall, I believe, traffic in the southern end was in that 20,000 to 25,000 cars per day across the bridge. And I think the, the northern end was more in the 10,000 to 15,000 cars per day. So, you know, north of maybe 4th Avenue or so. But I can certainly email Steph with some exact numbers.
Okay. So has any of your previous studies looked at the current patterns for people jumping off of Fayette, cutting through the neighborhoods? Have you looked at that aspect of it?
No, not specifically, no.
Okay, because anecdotal records, I can tell you, if there's traffic backed up by 3rd Avenue, people are cutting down the avenues at the first light, at the first opportunity. And I just don't know how this could possibly work. I really am a huge skeptic of this. I see all the traffic backing up and between people knowing the town so well and we're laid out so easy with the avenues, people cut through now from Caldwell up West 6, down E6 to Hector. I live near Walnut Street. It's a constant cut through there. I just think it could really hurt our neighborhoods tremendously. So I would really have to be proven wrong somehow to change my mind.
Well, and certainly, I mean, it's not the intent of this concept. We don't want to force any more traffic onto the, to the side streets at all. It was just, you know, when we had discussed options for, you know, improving safety along the roadway and, and trying to make it more, you know, easier for pedestrians to cross and so forth, this was simply one option that could be looked at. So I, I don't disagree. I think, you know, when we looked at a few of the intersections, they seemed to work acceptably. But, you know, without this study, I really can't answer that question. I mean, you may be, you may be right that it's just not a feasible solution. But, you know, that's why we had outlined the scope that we did to look at.
Right. And I'm happy you brought up the pedestrian safety. What would be some other ways we could increase pedestrian safety and reduce the speeds on Fayette? You had mentioned before a few other ways.
Well, we have the arms, right, Brian? Are we still getting?
They're ordered, but they're not in yet.
Yeah, they're, so they're in design with PennDOT, the two rapid flashing beacon masked arms at, at Fourth and Seventh, and they'll be bid out shortly.
Okay.
You know, so those are, those are one.
Okay, so we have that already.
That, that's already in process, yes.
Great, and then, go ahead, Bob.
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
Are they approved by PennDOT, those arms?
They were previously approved, and, and yes, the, the permits, we just have to update the permits with PennDOT, but the, the concept's approved and, you know, we don't foresee any issue with, with being able to put those out to bid shortly.
I got another question for you.
Yeah.
Who owns, who owns the bridge?
PennDOT does. Yeah, it's a, it's a PennDOT bridge.
Is it West Conchi and Conchi?
PennDOT, Bob.
PennDOT.
PennDOT, PennDOT owns the bridge?
Yes.
All right, I'm just curious because every time for 20 years, being a councilman, every time we talk to PennDOT about slowing Fayette Street down in the bridge, they're not in the business of slowing cars, traffic down. They want to speed it up as much as possible. So that's what I've been called for years. Whether it's true or not, I don't know.
Brian, just speaking to Bob's concern, this, this concept has been approved by PennDOT in municipalities around us, right?
Yes, it has. So it has been used in other municipalities. It was recently used on First Avenue and Upper Marion. I know there's a few other corridors that are in study or design. And, and to Bob's point, I mean, he's right, I think. But sometimes we confuse, you know, speed with, with capacity. So, so PennDOT does want to move, you know, the volume of traffic that's there efficiently, meaning that they do want to, what they do want traffic to be able to get through intersections without a lot of delay. But they're also very cognizant of, you know, making sure it's at a reasonable speed. So I know that, that PennDOT has recently, you know, in the last five years, looked favorably along, on a lot of these road diet concepts.
But was there a bridge involved?
Well, we wouldn't be implementing the road diet anywhere near the bridge. So I think, you know, the intersection of, to be clear, and I apologize, I should have probably touched on that at the beginning, but, you know, to be clear, we don't envision any change at, at Fayette and Elm, or Fayette and First. You know, we would start looking at this maybe at Second, onto the north.
Right.
Okay, good, that's good. All right, thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
No.
Okay. So go ahead, Steph.
Well, in front of you is the, the study itself. So what you would be considering this evening is a motion to authorize the traffic engineer to conduct a study of the Fayette Street Traffic Calming Road Diet. From what I'm hearing this evening, that would be contingent upon PennDOT's approval of the concept and study. And what Brian has submitted is an estimated cost of $19,800 plus time spent as it relates to certain meetings and agency coordination.
So my question for council is, is this something that you want to consider this evening, or you want to discuss more?
I would like to discuss more.
I would like to discuss more.
I'd like to see what PennDOT says.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear what PennDOT says before we go forward.
Hey, Steph, so out of the ordinary, I'm thinking that we may need to table this one until we get a response from PennDOT and maybe have it put back on the agenda next month for approval?
That sounds good.
Sounds good, and I actually have another question for Brian. If you could give us examples of towns where this has been implemented? And as Bob said, I know not everyone has a bridge like we do, but other towns that might have exits from both our Schuylkill Expressway and the Blue Route, because it's not just the bridge. We also get all the traffic coming off of those two major throughways. And, you know, it could be 309 or whatever, a turnpike exit. But I would like to see if it's, as you said, maybe a block or two away from a major exit like that. Because that, it's wonderful, we have a great location, we're right in the middle of all these transportation arteries, but we also are, you know, right in the middle of them. So it has its pluses and its minuses.
Sure, I will, yeah, I'll try and assemble some example locations that are within the region you can take a look at.
That would be terrific. Thank you.
Certainly.
So just for, for clarification purposes, we are tabling item D for this evening, and I will be seeing it back on an agenda for further discussion based upon timing of Brian's additional information and any feedback we get from PennDOT.
Yes. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Steph.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, the next, next item on the agenda is public comment. So we'll start with council and the mayor's comments first. Mayor Arrington?
Steph, do you need any kind of formal vote on the car show?
No, so we're, but if you would, if you can provide information, I think that would be, it's right, be a valid time to do so.
All right, so we are going ahead with the Arts Festival and Car Show on June 5th. As a live event, it'll be our first live event in the borough since COVID hit, and that will be from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM on June 5th with a June 12th rain date. So, so we're really excited. I know my team's really excited to put it on, and I know the community is thirsting to get out and to look at some beautiful cars and artwork in a safer way as possible, so we are going to make sure that happens. So thank you to the administration and to council for your support on that. And then as far as events the past two weeks, we had EAC's cleanup on April 10th, and we had probably close to 150 volunteers, and they picked up 580 pounds of trash. And it just seemed like a great for everyone to come out and do something together as a community. So thank you to Public Works for being there and to the administration for working with myself and the EAC to make this event happen. And then look forward to one October will be the fall cleanup. And then, of course, we had the Contract and Baseball and Softball League Opening Day last Saturday, so it was just great to see, you know, our fields being used and active again, to see a little bit of normalcy. And I have to mention that Tori Tortaro from Tortaro Restaurant took over the snack stand, and it is pretty phenomenal. So if you get a chance to check out the new snack stand, I highly recommend it. And then finally, not, not to end on a bummer, but it is spotted lanternfly season. So we are continuing, the EAC and the borough are continuing to partner with the Penn States, with some of their experts to talk about ways that residents can help mitigate these invasive pests. So we will keep running this until hopefully we are past the spotted lanternfly invasion. This training is happening on April 22nd at 6:30 PM. It is free. You can find this poster on my social media, the EAC's social media, and the Borough's social media. So we hope everyone will, will join us, and that is it.
Thank you, Mayor Arrington. And I'm very excited about the car and art show.
We are too.
Yeah, I think we all are.
It's great to be able to have an event start again, so. Okay, Mr. Stokely?
Yeah, I just have one question. Maybe it's a question for Rayo, the engineer. The underground work being done on the east side, the infill patches, is the engineer inspecting that, or are we inspecting it? Because it's not a very good job.
What are you talking about exactly?
I'm talking about Seventh and Eighth Avenue where they're doing all the patching.
Yeah, it's a, it's a liquid fuels project. Bob, it's a liquid fuels project, so it is our engineer, and it is actually PennDOT who is inspecting and approving that project.
But they're doing a lousy job. They're doing a lousy job on the infills.
It's temporary.
It's a temporary. When's it gonna be?
When they're done leaking.
I think they have to wait a certain amount of time to make sure there's no leaking, and then they go back and repave, I believe. Is that correct?
So they're gonna pave the whole road, or they're gonna just pave over those patches?
I don't, I don't know what PennDOT does. Steph, do you have an answer for that?
Scope of work, Bob, that was approved by PennDOT. I don't know it off the top of my head. I do know that there is, there is paving involved, mill and overlay, along with the underground work that was completed with the project. So I will get the actual documentation of the approved project by PennDOT, and I can send that out. That's not a problem.
Thank you. I was just worried about that they're not gonna, I mean, it looks pretty rough now, but maybe later on. I know, understand it has to cure and all, but what's the procedure? Are they gonna take care of it later date and make sure it's right? Because our roads are bad enough.
Right, I will, I'll put a timeline together for you, and I'll send that out. No problem.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Ms. Barton?
Nothing tonight.
Jane?
I just wanted to commend the Friends of Country Parks Group for coordinating and working with our Parks and Recs Department. I think it's a fabulous, innovative idea, and I hope the parents really embrace it and make the most of this. It's a really cool project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Ms. Tino?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ike?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Tina?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I got everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Brittany, do we have anything for public comment?
No, we did not receive any written public comment.
Okay, and do we have anyone with us this evening for public comment? Okay, I believe we do not have anyone.
I have one here.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, this is Joe Farino from 412 West Elm.
Hi, Joe.
How you guys doing? Hi, girls. Hey, I got a question on this traffic study. I'm, I'm concerned with the traffic patterns that are gonna be developing from the new apartment complexes by the river. And I want to make sure that it's top of mind that you consider what traffic's going to be created once these are live. Because not only will you have Marisource, but you're gonna have, you know, the 2, 300 unit apartment complexes by the river. You're gonna have another 300 unit apartment complex at 400 West Elm. So West Elm Street is already gonna be extremely tight, and I think a lot of that traffic that's going to be trying to get out of Oak Street onto the bridge, so there's 2, 300 unit apartment complexes. If that, Oak Street's one, you know, one lane to take a right onto that, which means Elm Street is gonna be well backed up. And you're, you're already, anybody that uses Elm Street is likely gonna turn up Maple or go down Caldwell to get to Fayette. And, you know, the traffic study today could be completely different tomorrow once these are all live. Like, all that traffic that gets backed up on West Elm is gonna be, you know, taken over from West Elm, you know, West Elm to probably at least Sixth. So I'd ask that you guys give that some consideration, and I'm, you know, happy you guys are gonna talk about it more because I think that's, that's gonna be a big piece to consider.
Thanks, Joe, and, and we, we are aware, and so that you understand and the public understands, if we do go forward with this study, the study is not a, over a short period of time. This is something that would take a long time to study and consider. So it, that would fall into it, all the new development also in the traffic from it, because we are all well aware of everything coming. So I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ms.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, with that, I will say, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and have a good evening.
Bye.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.